Okay. Meeting with Santa Barbara City Council for June 16, 2009 will now come to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is Alcazar. Will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Falconi.
Here.
Horton.
Here.
House.
Here.
Snyder.
Here.
Williams. Mayor Bloom absent. Mayor Protem Francisco.
Mr. Armstrong, are there any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes. Mayor Protem Francisco.
Very good. We now have public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the public to speak for up to two minutes on topics that are under our jurisdiction but are not on today's agenda. And the first speaker today will be Elizabeth Anderson, followed by Charles McChesney.
Honorable City Councilmembers, thank you for the opportunity to pray for you today. I am still in awe over the outcome of the Hesosita fire and how the community came together to help those affected by the fire. I also see this most recent fire as a situation that took place to bring us together as a community, to test our skills of reaching out to one another in various ways. I will continue to pray that it won't take a disaster like this to draw our compassion out to help one another in times of need. Father, I pray for your supernatural protection over each council member today. As each item is brought forth on the agenda, I pray that you soften each member's heart to hear what the individual's concern may be today. I pray that as each person expresses their issue or concern, that you would give them a great sense of peace and hope that only comes from you. Remind us of your presence here today and the manner that we handle our speech and actions as the people of the community bring their issues to the attention of the city council. Father, I pray that the meeting goes well today and that you continue to build up the team that the city council members represent. Give each member what they need spiritually, mentally, emotionally, physically, and financially to meet the needs of the community today and to work together as a team throughout the days ahead. I pray for resolutions today and continued efforts in providing concrete answers to real problems in the community. I pray that what is promised by the city to an individual for particular need would be delivered and not forgotten or placed aside. I pray for those whose needs have not been met by bringing their concern to the city, specifically those who have suffered a loss in the T fire and have not seen resolution come about as a result of repeated efforts in requesting help. I pray for strength and hope for all the residents of Santa Barbara that are facing serious difficulties in their families, homes, finances, and places of employment. Slow down our pace so that we can see the needs of the community. Father, most of all, remove the anger in each one of us and replace it with love. Remove the burdens and obstacles in our life to freely love and give to one another as you provide for us individually. Give us help in setting our priorities according to your will. For God did not give us a spirit of timidity, but of spirit of power, of love, and of self-discipline. Second Timothy 1:7. Thank you.
Charles McChesney, followed by Monica Jones.
Good afternoon. I'm Charles McChesney from the Police Officers Association. And I just wanted to thank you, first off, for all the anguish you've been going through over the last couple of months in dealing with these budget concerns. The Police Officers Association made an offer to the city administrator that we hope will help somewhat in that. And I also want to let you know that we were encouraged by words that were spoken by Ms. Falconi and Mr. Francisco in recognizing that there are still some positions that we think have a direct impact on public safety and that we would hope that you, as things were sent back to the city administrator for review, that there are some good recommendations that come out of that. So, thank you very much. Still like to get a little bit more. We have a Range Master, an IT technician. I checked our log of vehicles, maintenance requests for computer problems, and I saw this morning there were eight vehicles that were reporting computer problems in the car. So, these are actual public safety positions, even though they're not officers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Charlie.
Monica Jones will be followed by David.
Hello, I'm Monica Jones, and I want to thank all of you for your support so far in the efforts of the Friends of Los Banoos to raise the money necessary to keep the Ortega Pool open for children's free swimming this summer. That affects 100 children a day. Some of them can afford lessons, some of them can't, but everybody has the opportunity to be in the water and become more safe in the water and practice the skills they have. For Ortega Pool, we're trying to raise $6,000, I'm sorry, $8,600. We're also trying to raise $4,200 to keep the Los Banoos Pool open this summer on Sundays. There are many swimmers at Los Banoos who are experienced lap swimmers and just are logging the laps, but there are also always people in the small, what we call the kiddie pool area, the short, shallow part of the pool, who are really trying to learn how to swim. And some people may think, why is Los Banoos even an issue? Well, if you follow the news, you might have read that last week, the Stanford professor who mentored the two founders of Google died in his own swimming pool. He was Indian. He had never learned to swim. He had children, and so he and his wife decided to move into a house with a pool, and he always said, "I'll learn to swim, I'll learn to swim." And people are convinced this was simply an accident, that he's lost his balance, fell in, panicked, and couldn't save himself. So, I think both of these issues are extremely important. The good news, out of the 13,000 we need, we have thus far raised 3,000. It means we only have 10,000 to go in the next two weeks, and we're looking for the support of the council and members of the community to help us reach this goal.
Ten seconds, Mrs. Jones.
My last quick statement is that fortunately, the Santa Barbara Athletic Roundtable has given us a very generous donation of $500, and I just came here from the ocean swimming class, the Santa Barbara City College Ocean Swimming Class, and they just started yesterday, but they have pledged $150. I have found a good and generous mermaid who will match any donation made to the Ortega Pool. So, the $150 from these kids, $5 each makes 300, and they think they can make 500. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Jones. Mr. House, a question?
Actually, I have a question for Ms. Jones. If somebody wanted to contribute to you, to this effort for Los Banoos and for the Ortega Pools, where would they send the money? How would they reach you? What would they do?
We have a website of the Friends of Los Banoos. It's www.friendsoflosbanos.org. Again, that's all one word, www.friendsoflosbanos.org. People can also, if they don't have a computer, they can call me personally at (569) 2407, (569) 2407. They can call the mayor's office, or they can call Parks and Rec and get the mail-in address. But it's important that everybody helps a little bit.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
David Homeless will be followed by Bob Miles.
Why are you homeless? Geez, that's gonna be a tough question.
Please.
Hi, guys. I'm back. I took a good look around since I've been back. Things are pretty calm out there. And I've been in quite a few places, and got a lot worse problems than you all do. I was told by a judge to get out of town, and then after I get back, I've been hearing some whispers about an ordinance. I think it's gonna create a problem if you push it through, to be honest with you. Because, like I said, I stayed up until 1 o'clock the other night, and it's pretty calm out there. I don't think you need that ordinance, and I'm willing to argue with Steve about it, but more or less, I'm back and I'm kind of watching things. And I just don't see, I don't see the problem. Oh, yeah, it's my birthday, so I'm gonna finish celebrating it.
Thank you.
Happy birthday, David.
Bob Miles will be followed by Bob Hanson.
Honorable councilmembers, my name is Bob Miles. I live at 1540 Franceschi Road, and I wanted to speak with you just briefly regarding Franceschi Park and the fire fuel that resides in that park. I'm talking primarily about the lower part of the park. The upper part of the park, Cal Fire came along a few days ago and cut down some of the large eucalyptus trees. But the main part of the park where people drive into, this is just a jungle. I doubt if it's been pruned or trimmed in years, and it creates quite a fire hazard there. If a fire got going there, it would really rage through there and also rage through the houses. I delivered a write-up on this to the council office last week for all the members of the council and for the Park Department Director, and I would be very hopeful that we could work out something that would nibble away at the excess fuel in the park to prevent a wildfire and actually to save homes and lives, too, really. I am very well aware of the fire problem, pardon me, I'll get it right. I'm very aware of the financial problems that the city is having, and I sympathize with those. I'm sure that the first thing the city would probably say in regard to cleaning out the park would be, we don't have the money. I am hopeful that there might be some projects, that it wouldn't hurt to have them deferred a bit and put in some cleaning up of...
Ten seconds, Mr. Miles.
Ten? Better hurry. Okay. I have an outline here of how the city may proceed. It's just our view of this, and basically, what we're asking is for the city to take a step at a time and get something rolling. So, next year, we're not in the same position, and I thank you very much.
Thank you. Bob Hanson will be followed by our last speaker, Fred Coleman.
I went to the Subcommittee on Homeless and Community Relations, and I was wondering, when is the next meeting? Do you know, Helene? You're chairing, right?
Yeah, I'm the chair. It hasn't been scheduled yet, but Sue Gray over at Community Development would be the one to answer the question definitively for you, or you can call me.
Because when you go to the meeting and you ask a question like, you guys are having a special panhandling session with hotelers and business people, why isn't there a homeless person on that? Why isn't there a panhandler on that meeting, on that little hidden meeting? Are they really gonna come out with some good stuff and really get them off State Street? Or can a person sit on a bench or wherever where they sign and, you know, be calm and people give them money? So, anyway, that's my question today. Why? The group is called Santa Barbara Subcommittee on Homeless and Community Relations. Community relations with who? Isn't the homeless part of this community, too? Or are they not really part of this community? Is a panhandler part of this community? I think he is. I was out there on Station and caught this rat. And, you know, even he's part of this community, even rats. He's a nice little rat. Anyway, so, we're doing a good job in Santa Barbara. It's, you know, we try not to look like we're really running the homeless out. There is a war against the homeless. There's a war against the gangs. It'd be nice if there was, you know, some real positive things happening. My idea is like, have a national agenda of having, offering homeless people someplace to stay. They could pay, they could do some volunteer work across our nation. Because each city, like this city, is waging war against the poorest of the poor. Some of them, you know, hate, run them out of town somewhat, you know, but others, they're really, you know, got all kinds of problems. You don't know someone until you really are with them for a while.
Ten seconds, Mr. Hanson.
So, thank you.
Fred Coleman will be followed by Claudia Bratton. Sorry.
My name's Fred Coleman. I came before and I asked Mayor Marty Bloom if they're gonna review taking the infractions into misdemeanors. How much more is it costing the city for doing this? Because now I see the bus coming from the jail at 1:30. It used to come by my house at 12:00. Now, the load is a lot heavier for the judges. They said, well, it's not on the agenda. Can we get it put on the agenda one time and somebody come up with the figures of how much more this turning infractions into misdemeanors? A misdemeanor is an arrestable offense where an infraction isn't. So, I would like to see it put on the agenda, because I know it's costing the city a lot of money. Thank you.
Thank you. And Claudia Bratton will be our final speaker.
Well, good afternoon. We're busy at Solstice, just getting ready for Friday, the festival opening, and for Saturday, and many of you are in the parade, so thank you. And we invite people, there's still time, to come down and join a float. In fact, I was there and met some frogs for my float, so it's been busy. Thank you, Grant, he's been keeping our machines operating. I've got shirts, I don't bring for all of you, but I will drop them off in the right sizes. So, these will be on sale this weekend, and we also have Texas Orange. So, I wanted to show you that. And we just thank you for all your support. We could not do it without you guys, and we're really looking forward to a wonderful time. And our theme is splash, and we seem to have had a lot of splashing around since we named that theme. But last year was so hot that we thought we needed a little cooler theme, so, thank you. Do you have any questions?
Mr. Williams.
Thank you for continuing this, your faithfulness to the Solstice Parade.
I appreciate that. I do, I do. So, noon on Saturday at Cota and State, that's the question we answer most of all. So, thank you. I'll see you all then.
Mr. House?
You'd mentioned the workshops, and I've really enjoyed going over there and being part of that. But would you just refresh everybody where and what time?
Oh, sure.
You know, if they want to volunteer, I mean, there's somebody there to greet them when they come over and that kind of thing.
Absolutely. Our workshops are open really every day until the parade now, from about noon until dark or a little later. And we need sewers especially, people who can sew costumes. That would be great. You don't have to be a great sewer, but just run a machine. And we also need volunteers for monitors in the parade and, you know, selling our shirts in the park and things like that. So, I'll give you the number of the workshop. It's (965) 5535. And if you could call that if you have questions. Or also, our website, solstisparade.com, is an excellent source for all this information. So, thank you all.
Thank you.
See you Saturday. See you Friday, too. Bye.
We now have the consent calendar. Mrs. Alcazar, will you please read Items Two and Three by title only?
Item number two, adoption of ordinance establishing prima facie speed limits. Recommendation that council adopt by reading of title only. An ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara, amending Section 10.60.015 of the municipal code, establishing the prima facie speed limit on Almar Avenue from State Street to Foothill Road at the current speed limit of 35 miles per hour, reducing the prima facie speed limit on Mitchell-Torreana Street from San Andreas Street to California Street from 30 to 25 miles per hour, and reducing the prima facie speed limit on Mission Street from Robin Street to Anacapa Street from 30 to 25 miles per hour. And item number three, parking and business improvement area annual assessment report 2010, intention to levy assessment rates, including recommendation B, that council adopt by reading of title only. A resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara declaring council's intention to levy parking and business improvement area assessment rates for the 2010 fiscal year at a public hearing to be held on June 30, 2009 at 2:00 p.m.
Thank you. That was reading by title only. Without objection, we'll waive further reading. Are there any items that anyone wishes to remove?
First time, I'd like to ask the council to take Item Two separately. I need to abstain, as I live close to one of the intersections listed.
Very good. Ms. Williams?
I'd like to pull Item Seven, just to go over the basic points.
Let's address Item Seven first.
Item number seven, economic stimulus funding, energy efficiency, and conservation block grant application.
I just wanted to ask Mr. Dewey to go over the information that we got at the Sustainability Committee meeting, or Ms. Johnson to go over it, whichever is their preference, because I believe that this is a great step forward. It's, you know, about 560,000 kilowatts worth of savings to a variety of cities, city facilities, all enabled so by efficiently spending our Obama stimulus funds.
Very good. Ms. Johnson?
Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor.
Hey.
Mister Mayor. Councilmember Williams, excuse me. So, the energy block grant funding that is before you today consists of 868,000. Most of that funding is, at this point, proposed to be used for the energy retrofits in city municipal facilities. The balance 50,000 is intended to be used for a climate action plan. In regards to the energy retrofits in city facilities, Jim Dewey can give you a summary of some of those projects. There are a number of different types of, you can see the facility list within the council agenda report, you know, a number of different types of projects in all of them, but he can give you a brief summary of all of them.
Mr. Dewey?
Mayor Protem and Councilmember Williams, our projects include several buildings, including City Hall, the Central Library, East Side Library, Franklin Center, and several other buildings, too. We focused on the general fund buildings primarily, and these projects are energy efficiency projects, so the replacement of air conditioning systems that really needed to be replaced anyway, so we get some energy efficiency there. The addition of air-to-air economizers onto existing air conditioning systems that allow us to use cool outside air for free cooling. And it also includes a electronic building management system that enables us to control all these systems in the most efficient way and be able to turn off the units during our flex days, holidays, something that we aren't able to do right now. The project also includes upgrades to sports lighting on three of our fields, Dwight Murphy Field, the Cabrillo Ball Field, and Pershing Park. And that's not only upgrading the lighting so that it's more efficient, but also some of the lighting standards have really seen a lot of corrosion over the years, and they're not really in that great a shape, and we'd like to fix those things up, too. So, not only is this energy efficiency, I mean, that's its primary purpose, but it also addresses some of our deferred maintenance that we have in city facilities.
And as I understand it, from the committee meeting that all told, these projects would constitute a reduction of our energy of about 5%. Is that still what your estimate is, Mr. Dewey?
It's actually a little bit less than 5% in total if you look at all of the energy that we use. However, if you look at just the general fund facilities, it's, of course, it's a lot higher than that, and that was our focus.
Right. Well, thank you. Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the council? Ms. Falconi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. I noticed that two buildings, or two buildings of note at any rate, are not on here, and that would be the police building and the Carrillo Rec. Is that because they are already underway, being funded by RDA, along with Station One, I might add? So, that's three that aren't on this list. Is that why they're not? I assume that the HVACs that have been done in Station One, the police station, and the renovation of Carrillo Rec contain these sorts of devices in the new designs and the new applications?
Yes. Councilmember Falconi, in the design for the renovation, as it stands right now for the police department, we have a lot of energy retrofits, so we're waiting to see how that project develops. And so, we purposely excluded that. There's a lot of potential at the PD for energy retrofits, but because they're already identified in the renovation project, we did not include them. At the Cabrillo Pavilion, they're really, they don't really have that much mechanical systems or that many mechanical systems there. I think there's just one air conditioning system, and for the most part, it just uses furnaces. So, there really wasn't that big of an opportunity there.
Okay. But we will have three more buildings, in essence, added to this list when it's all said and done. Is that a fair statement?
It won't be added to this list, because this just identifies the energy efficiency and conservation block grants. But, yeah, as far as our overall program, it definitely will.
Okay, great. And the only other comment that I have is that I find it absolutely stunning that 11 members of staff need to come to talk about this, but, okay. I appreciate all the work, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. House?
Yes, just two little things. One, I know this isn't, we don't have a representative here from Edison today, but I know that somebody in their private world would want to have somebody come over and help audit their situation, that the Edison company is willing and happy to come over and help them out, do that, too. And it's really nice to see that more than just our own program, our sustainability program, approach the things here in the city, that we are able to take advantage of the American Recovery and Investment Act and really use it for something that will hit the bottom line. And I think that was your intention in focusing on the general fund buildings that we're really, that you're talking about. It's where you can get a difference made, but also where a difference can be made financially for the city as well. Is that my, am I accurate in my understanding of your approach there?
Yes. Councilmember House, we're looking for opportunities not only for energy efficiency that has payback, which it does, we're also getting incentives from Southern California Edison through the SKEEP partnership. But we also look for opportunities where we had older equipment that needed to be changed anyway, so it really has a lot of benefits to the city.
It's just, for me, whenever I use the word sustainability, I've always sort of thought about it in kind of a environmental kind of way, and there's another side to that, which is the efficiency of our fiscal resources as well, and that we're really being more efficient with use of the public's funds. So, for that, I really thank you very much for taking advantage of this opportunity.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor Protem.
Councilmember.
I have to take it back, it's not 11 members talking about this item. They're here for Wildland. There are like three members here, four members, to talk about. Counting heads over here, but then I realized, oh, no, you're for Wildland, so, never mind.
Thank you for that clarification. Mr. Williams, did you wish to vote separately on this item?
No, no. It's just informational only.
Thank you, Mr. Dewey. Thank you very much.
I'll move the consent calendar minus Item Two.
Second.
We have motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'll move Item Two.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
One abstention.
And one abstention. Very good. Onto the regular calendar. Item number 11. Mrs. Alcazar, will you please read Item 11 by title only?
Item number 11, renewal of levy for fiscal year 2009, 2010, for the Wildland Fire Suppression Assessment District. Recommendation that council adopt by reading of title only. A resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara declaring its intention to continue vegetation road clearance, implementation of defensible space inspection and assistance program, and implementation of a vegetation management program within the foothill and extreme foothill zones, declaring the work to be of more than general or ordinary benefit, and describing the district to be assessed to pay the costs and expenses thereof, approving the engineer's report, confirming diagram and assessment, and ordering levy of the Wildland Fire Suppression Assessment District for fiscal year 2009, 2010.
Thank you. And Mr. House and Mr. Horton, I see your lights.
I live within the district. I'll be stepping down for the item.
Okay.
I also find that my address is within the district, and so I'm gonna recuse on this item.
Very good. And we are now without a quorum, and we will await the return of Mr. Williams to continue.
I'm here today with Amber Anderson, Wild Services Specialist, Ann Marx, Wildland Specialist, Edrum Fire Chief, Andy DiMizio, and John Bliss from SCI, our engineering firm. And as you know, we're here to renew the Wildland Fire Benefit Assessment District and talk about, a little bit about the services that are provided by the district and the, a little bit about the history of it. I would like Amber to run the program, and since basically Amber is responsible for this program, I'd like her to talk about it. And we'll also discuss a little bit about the relationship and the role that the Benefit Assessment District played in the T fire and in the Hesosita fire. So, if you'd like to take it away?
So, good afternoon.
Please.
So, good afternoon.
There we go. Good, good afternoon. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, good. As you know, on July 11th of 2006, the city council adopted the resolution that created the formation of the Wildland Fire Suppression Benefit Assessment District that provided specific services that reduce the impacts associated with wildland fire. The duration of the Benefit Assessment District was one year, allowing for annual renewal. And within this renewal accompanying it is the engineer's report, which is required in adopting the resolution every year. This engineer's report sets the price for a single-family parcel in the foothill zone at $69.83, and $86.58 for a single-family parcel in the extreme foothill zones for the upcoming 2009, 2010 fiscal year. This actually represents zero change in dollars from the previous year due to the minimal increase in the current consumer price index. This map is the area that's encompassed within the Benefit Assessment District, which is the foothill and the extreme foothill zones of the city's high-fire hazard wildland areas that's defined in the city's wildland fire plan. The services that are provided within this Assessment District are vegetation road clearance, defensible space assistance, which includes voluntary inspections and chipping services, and vegetation management, which is prioritized through the Cityland, City Wildland Fire Plan. This map shows the miles of roads that we completed last year through the road clearance program. Our benchmark goal each year is approximately 14 miles, and we came very close, actually I think we went a little bit over that in accomplishing that in the previous year. And this next slide shows both what we did last year in green and the areas that we have marked completed in the upcoming fiscal year. Through the road clearance program, not only do we remove the flammable vegetation along the roadside areas of the wildland fire district, we also open up the roadways to allow incoming resources into the city wildland high-fire hazard areas and help the egress of the residents trying to evacuate from those areas during a wildland fire plan. And this picture shows an example of one of the roads that we cleared this last year. It's on the corner of Loma Media and Roble Lane. It's a great example of what we're trying to do through road clearance. One of, actually, my favorite aspects of the district is our defensible space inspection program, where homeowners call up, and we voluntarily go out, and we give them ideas and tips and different recommendations that they can do to make their home more fire-safe, utilizing their current landscape and other things that they can do to remove flammable vegetation and open up that area around their home. And since the T Fire and the Hazza Zeta Fire, we've actually seen a 50% increase in those, those phone calls from homeowners who want to know what they can do to make their home fire-safe. So, it's a very successful aspect of the, the district. Once homeowners know what they need to do to make their home more fire-safe, we allow for a cost-effective means of removing vegetation that they need to get away from their property by offering chipping services each spring. Homeowners put brush that's been cut out alongside the road, and we combine with our chipping services and chip that material as part of the services. We're able to use, utilize 99% of the chips that we get from this project by dumping them back on homeowners' properties or using them through city parks. So, it's very nice, and it's actually a very popular program with homeowners in the foothill district. We just wrapped up that project this past week. This area outlines the different districts of chipping that we have. We break it up from March all the way through June, and homeowners can refer to the schedule to know when they can utilize those chipping services. This past year marked the full implementation of our vegetation management project. We were able to develop two project areas and complete over 20 acres of vegetation management. The area that you see on the right is the Van's Meadow area of Schofield Park, and the area that you see on the left in yellow is the St. Mary's Seminary parcel. Now, we're actually pretty fortunate in a way, if you want to say that, with the St. Mary's parcel, because we started that project before the T Fire. We were actually about an acre and a half into that project before the T Fire came, and the western boundary of that fire bumped through that St. Mary's parcel. So, after the T Fire, we realigned our project area and worked on the remaining. It was about five and a half acres left of that parcel, and we were, again, able to show actually what we're really trying to do with vegetation management, because we had the Hazza Zeta come, fire come through just a couple months ago. I have, the next couple slides actually really show what we're trying to accomplish through vegetation management by using St. Mary's Seminary as an example. Want to go through? So, if you can see this, this is a before picture of the second project area at St. Mary's Seminary. It's looking from the west towards St. Mary's Seminary, and we're working up there on the hillside. And this is the after picture. It's a little bit hard to see, but what you, what we've done here is removed approximately 60% of the fuel along that slope by taking out dead vegetation, exotic pest plants, and really opening it up. And the idea is not to stop the fire, but it's to reduce the heat and the intensity coming out of that fire to slow down that spread and give firefighters a chance to make a stand against the fire. And that's exactly what they did in the Hazza Zeta Fire. This panorama shows, again, from the same vantage point, what we're trying to accomplish with vegetation management, and I feel that we are very successful in this project. As you can see, everything to the left burned very hot. We had 100% complete consumption of the fuel, but then as it moved through that project area, you can see that there's more canopy left, the fire didn't burn as hot, and it actually sort of just died out and tied back in with the T Fire, and allowed those firefighters who were standing up there at the gym a successful chance at fighting the fire. And then if you looked, I don't have pictures of it, but if you look on the east side where the T Fire came up, which was really interesting, is that whole side of the gym had quite a lot of damage from the heat that came up that Rattlesnake Canyon from the T Fire, busted windows and damaged a lot of the eaves and the tiles. But then if you look at this west side, which was in a very similar situation, I think that they had a few tiles broken and one window cracked. So, it really did a lot in taking out that heat coming up towards the seminary. And this next slide just shows it again, the before picture and the after picture of the Hazza Zeta Fire with our vegetation management project. So, this is the area that we have marked for completion for this upcoming 2009, 2010 fiscal year. This is above Ontare and San Rokey Creek area. It's a portion of the community fuels treatment network. This is the last remaining portion of that network that wasn't consumed in the last two fires, so we want to finish that and tie it in. The funds that we get from the, for the Wildland Fire Benefit Assessment District come, a portion of it come from the general funds, and a portion come from the fees charged through the Assessment District, which come out to roughly $430,000. This is a breakdown of the cross, the costs that provide for the roadway clearance, the defensible space and chipping programs, and vegetation management, and this also takes into account the refunds that we issued to the T Fire victims who did lose their homes. So, for the 2009, 2010 projects, we'd like to continue road clearance, continue the chipping services for the entire assessment area, continue providing voluntary defensible space inspections, develop two additional vegetation management projects, and again, complete 20 more acres of vegetation management. And our recommendation is that we renew, or that you renew, the services as outlined in the Wildland Fire Suppression Assessment for the upcoming year.
Thank you very much for that report.
Thanks.
Mr. Porek, anything further?
I just wanted to add, I'd like to open it up for questions if you have any, but we have so many staff members here today, I inadvertently slighted a couple of them. Obviously, Sarah Connect from the city attorney's office is with us, and Jim Austin, the supervisor of the Fire Prevention Bureau.
Very good, thank you. Okay, questions from the council? Ms. Falcone?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. At this point, is there any discussion about expanding the Assessment District in the light of the two front country fires that we've had, and then, of course, Galida had their Gap Fire, which was also a front country fire? Is there any discussion about that at this point?
We haven't specifically discussed any individual items. We're looking at expanding the enforcement element, because currently the Wildland Fire Suppression Benefit Assessment District doesn't have an enforcement leg. That's done by regular inspectors. And we are, of course, in discussions with the county through the Mission Canyon Plan for, you know, expanding to make it a regional kind of approach to Mission Canyon, because it does bridge that gap between two city zones.
And, and are you talking with the city of Galida as well to?
We have not spoken to the city of Galida as of yet.
In terms of enforcement, I've been reading in a couple of different places that some jurisdictions, I don't know if it's a city or a county, are actually making clearance, defensible space and clearance from the, from structures mandatory and charging fines from, could you go into that a little bit? I know we don't do that, and I don't think anybody...
We actually do.
Oh, do we? Okay, maybe you can clarify that for me a little bit.
Councilmember Falcone, the, the way that's done, and it's partly due to the recent code that we adopted, Chapter 47 of the Fire Code itself, the California Fire Code, which was adopted in January, is much more stringent than the old code was in terms of a defensible space requirements. So, we do now have sections that, that require that people perform their defensible space, and we can issue citations.
Okay.
So, that's part of California law, and we, in turn, have made it more stringent locally.
Okay, great. And they can call you to get help? You send people up to the house and go over it, kind of like our water?
Absolutely.
Assistance Conservation Program. If they need help in figuring out how to do that at their particular home, you offer lots of assistance, right?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Schneider?
Thank you. I want to thank everyone here for their tremendous work, and those on the ground doing the work in the field, and just want to take the opportunity, those listening, to thank the property owners for voting this in, because we couldn't have done it without their support, and they actually voted to tax themselves to make this happen, and it, the timing couldn't have been better, I think. As devastating as the T Fire and the Hazza Zeta Fire were, it would have been so much worse had we not had all that brush taken out in the last couple of years. Do you have those statistics of how much? I remember last year being my eyes wide open in terms of how much brush was, like by tons, or, or, did you have that number? I didn't catch it.
I'm not sure if we measured metric tons this year.
Okay.
We just finished that project. Actually, they're out today and tomorrow wrapping up the project, so we don't have those numbers, but I, I know that in comparison with last year, we are at about a halfway point, thinking that we're doing about 50% of what we accomplished last year until we have the Hazza Zeta Fire, and we're well over what we had accomplished last year as far as the amount of brush that we've taken out of the area.
Great. That, that data may be helpful as a way just to reiterate how much the tax assessment, the return on that investment, obviously, when a natural disaster happens, people can see it and feel it personally, but then, you know, year after year to see what, what return they're getting for that amount in terms of the work being done and the amount of brush being taken away. That's always helpful, I think, to see. So, as you do that, that would be helpful. And then finally, you mentioned briefly about working with the county in the Mission Canyon area. Is there any chance that they're going to look into their own Benefit Assessment District, or what, can you give us an update, a little more detail about where that is? Because it's right smack in the middle between our two, our two areas.
I don't know where the county fire department stands at this point, but we, at every opportunity, encourage that. We would like to see a Benefit Assessment District in Mission Canyon, because it would, it would help a lot. And we found, for instance, that even our own road clearance as part of the Benefit Assessment District aided in the evacuation, because it allowed us to get up and people to get out a lot easier than, than in the old days. I don't know if you remember, Los Alturas, for example, was very constricted. We couldn't get a fire engine up as, if one car was coming down. And so, you know, the road clearance has been very helpful just for that, and, and what we saw in Mission Canyon and the Hazza Zeta Fire was almost tragic, and it ended up, you know, with some firefighters burned over, and the roads are very constricted up there. So, we would like to see that kind of a thing, and we, we do encourage the county to do that.
Great. Well, whatever I'm sure we can do up here to help with that, I'm sure we will. But, thank you very much for your report, and thank you again for all your work here.
Mr. Williams?
I would just make an, an offer to, if I were in your place, make an offer to the county to, to do a presentation of some of this information to Mission Canyon residents, because I think once they see the advantages of the safety that it can create, we're going to get more public buy-in into creating or expanding a, a Benefit Assessment District, or creating two interlocking Benefit Assessment District, one county, one city, that look and act very similarly, and, and that will enhance the safety of, of city residents just because there won't be this massive area of vegetation that, that you could sweep in through Mission Canyon.
Councilmember Williams, I couldn't agree more. I think that just because it's, of its location geographically, Mission Canyon almost is a part of the city, and it does affect city residents on both sides.
Ms. Schneider?
I'll move the staff recommendation.
Second.
Okay, is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we have interviews with, for the city advisory groups at four. We also have a closed session item, and I believe we have time to address that item before our advisory group interviews. So, Mrs. Alcazar, could you please read that item?
Item number 13, Conference with Rural Property Negotiators, Cabrillo Bridge Replacement Project.
Thank you very much. So, we shall recess for closed session and then return at 4:00. Okay, the city council meeting of June 16th, 2009 will reconvene. Mrs. Alcazar, would you like to read the next item?
Interviews for city advisory groups.
Okay, I think, now, do we have any public comment? Okay.
No, we don't.
I think what we'll do in no particular order here, why don't we just start with people in the front, come up to the microphone one at a time, tell us your name, tell us what advisory group you're applying for, and we'll go from there.
Yeah, how many minutes?
I think we'll be flexible on this one.
Hey, hi, everyone. My name is Meg West. I'd like to start by apologizing. I'm not dressed a little more appropriately for this, but I was out playing in the dirt all day, because I'm a landscape architect. That's what we do.
This is Santa Barbara, it's fine.
Okay. I felt kind of bad. Usually, I look a little more appropriate.
And Blight, and through programs involving housing and public human services and capital projects amongst other activities. The CDHSC also uses the Santa Barbara City's General Fund for Human Services program, providing services to the city's youth, our seniors, and our disabled, along with health services and emergency services for shelter, food, and safety. I understand that the CDHSC evaluates proposals from agencies that provide these many services and functions to integrate cooperation between these many agencies. And I work with or am aware of these many agencies and programs that the CDHSC provides funds for, just to name a couple, Casa Esperanza, the food bank, Noah's Anchorage, CARE, Say Yes to Kids, Gain Prevention, and SART. I see firsthand what these programs can do, and I'm a communicator that enjoys bringing these similar programs together to cooperate, to reduce costs, and to be more effective. This is why I would be honored to be appointed to the Latino Community Chair in the CDHSC. For starters, I hear from parents during parent-teacher conferences at El Puente, and during these conferences, they talk about the struggles that they face, sometimes having trying to find a home to live, or to put food on the table, or just behavior issues with their sons and daughters. And we provide them the contact information in hopes that they'll give them contact and see what develops there. But I feel that we can encourage these many agencies that the CDHSC provides funds for, possibly to establish weekly parent meetings at El Puente or La Cuesta, and so they can actually put a face to the many agencies and actually establish a contact and be able to utilize these services more effectively. So this is an issue that I desire to change, along with having other programs come to the CDHSC for financial assistance, programs like the Youth Football League and Los Compadres. Again, my name is Daniel Ramirez, and I'm ready for the Latino Community Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ramirez. A question, Mr. Horton?
Daniel, I'm the Chair of the Council Committee on Youth, and so I'm interested in knowing in your work, have you been able to motivate or challenge the youth to think about a profession, or going on for further education, or get them directed so that they, you know, they can find something they want to do, and that would be meaningful? Have you had any success with that kind of thing?
Every day in classes, that's what I do. I try to encourage kids to get back on track and focused, primarily to get back to the high school so that they can figure out what they want to do if they don't already know yet. And sometimes it is challenging, either in the classroom or on the football field, we tell them, hey, if you really want to be a professional athlete, continue to work hard, try to keep your head above water, keep you focused, eat healthy, work out, stay, be good in school, keep the grades up. The particular age group I work with in youth football is 12 to 14, so it's right before they go to high school. So we try to let them know that, you know, statistically, not everyone may be a professional football player, but as long as they work hard in the classroom, they could be anything that they want. And at El Puente, we challenge with them that every day. The first thing is, if they can't go back to the high school level and end up staying with us at the program at El Puente, then we just encourage them to graduate, make their family proud, and hopefully they can find out a little bit what they want to do. If not, then get them to Santa Barbara City College where they can hopefully figure that out.
I have a follow-up. What kind of percentages are you aware of that they go back to the school, to the high school, or whatever it is, and are able to stay there and not come back to El Puente?
It differs between each student, but I'd say it'd be close to 60 to 70 percent. Some of us have to stay with us for, it depends on if they were expelled or having some type of expulsion matter. So it is a case-by-case scenario. Some of them are able to go back after about a year, but I would say it's well over 50 percent. And this year, we were able to have 18 students be involved with the City College Program, which is one of our higher numbers within recent years, so we're very proud of that. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, did you? No, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a great afternoon.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to say something. When we have multiple applicants for a limited number of positions, one of the things that we have been trying to really encourage people to do is if you just turned out you weren't selected for, and I don't mean to, that wasn't picking on anybody, but truthfully, many of us who applied and got a chance to participate on boards or commissions prior to being on city council even, didn't get it the first time, or even second time in some cases. And so I just want to say that for everyone who's here, we really highly prize your stepping up, and if for some reason or another, there's, you know, a limited number of positions and too many applicants, we really hope you'll come back and try the next time around because we want you to be active and participating and give you a chance at it. So I just say that for everyone who's here, and I think we pretty much do that every time we have these interviews, but thank you very much.
Very good point, Mr. House. Please.
Hello, Mr. Mayor Pro Temore and council members. My name is Denise Woolery, and I am an incumbent on the Single Family Design Board, which I have really loved serving on. That's why I'm back again to see if I can be appointed again for another term. I see in the questions you are asking if I am willing and able to devote the necessary time to serve. Yes, I think I've proven that, and because I am self-employed, I haven't the limitations that perhaps someone might, that has to show up nine to five every day. I've learned a lot on this board, under the tutelage of Bill Mahan, just a magnificent person, how to be able to solve some of the issues without being adversarial. It's a very, very fine balance on the board, and that has been, I think, my greatest accomplishment is learning that. There are a lot of people that get upset, and it's a very good lesson to learn. I think the most significant and rewarding thing besides that that I have experienced on the board has been the way the various groups have dealt with the fires that have happened recently. It's been really wonderful to see them, the people, the victims of the fire, get expedited through the process in a way that is very thoughtful to not only their loss, but also to the future of Santa Barbara, and still keeping in mind that the Design Board has their job to do nonetheless. The advisory group, Single Family Design Board, is operating very well, in my opinion. We've gotten many compliments from the public. There are improvements that can always be made. I would guess the one improvement that I would love to see is a better liaison between the different groups, particularly fire with the Single Family Design Board, that there's some communication issues and different agendas that both have, and I've seen some conflict come up between the thinking on those two boards, and I think we should all be on the same page about that. So that would be the only improvement I could see. Otherwise, I think we're functioning rather well and would love to have another term.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Okay. Thank you.
Hello.
Hi.
Madam Mayor, not Madam Mayor, sorry, Mayor Pro Tem and city council members.
Don't worry, Catherine. Staff made the same mistake. It's really hard to get used to a Mr. Mayor in this town. It's real weird.
Anyway, I know most of you know me, but I'm going to give you the spiel anyway. My name is Catherine Woodford, and I live at 1707 Garden Street. I'm here to apply for an appointment as a Commissioner to the Housing Authority. As most of you know, I have already served two terms on this commission. My last term began when the Housing Authority was in the early stages of planning for the development of Garden Court, and my second term ended just two weeks before the official opening of the award-winning El Correo. Presently, I am coming to the end of two terms on the Community Development Committee representing housing interests. For the past two years, I have served as Chair. Obviously, I'm familiar with the work of the Housing Authority, and since leaving the commission, I have stopped by the offices occasionally to see Rob Pearson and talk to his staff. I have also continued my involvement by serving on the organizing committee of the two fundraisers that have been held at the Canary Hotel for the Garden Court Foundation. Under the direction of Rob Pearson and his management team, the Housing Authority of Santa Barbara has developed into the, if not the, best housing authority in the country. El Correo continues to win many awards and is now a national model for communities across the country in the Housing First Program. I am proud, really proud, to be a small part of these projects, and I particularly enjoy being a champion for these programs, and especially for the clients that they serve. I believe I bring some unique perspectives to the Housing Authority Commission. I grew up in government-owned housing. Following World War II, there was an extreme shortage of housing in the U.K., and my parents were forced to move into public housing, where they remained for 20 years. From this experience, I can empathize with the frustrations and struggles of families wanting to own their own home. I can also understand the importance of providing educational and support services for our residents. Because of the support I received, I was able to access academic scholarships and higher educational opportunities. Such support programs are essential to developing future independence and upward mobility for the individuals and families. Prior to moving to Santa Barbara, my professional experience was in healthcare management, particularly assisting financially distressed facilities in minority and medically underserved areas. My last employment position was a CEO of a healthcare facility in which I was responsible for the conversion of a small hospital, a little larger than St. Francis, into a successful primary care and urgent care facility more suitable for the changing needs of the community. During the final eight years before retiring, I owned and operated my own healthcare management consulting company. We had contracts involving the development and establishment of healthcare facilities in disaster and high-need areas across the country, including numerous Indian reservations. These projects often use combinations of federal, state, and private monies, including HUD funding. Thirteen years ago, after many years living in the Northeast, I retired, quote, and I moved to Santa, with my husband, to Santa Barbara. Since then, I have been active in many numerous community organizations. I hope you will give me the opportunity to continue serving with a new appointment to this commission. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Question?
Any questions?
You all know me.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
No, but I will say that, Catherine, although many of us up here do know you quite well, I don't think I knew all of that about you, and I thank you for sharing that. It's very interesting. You are multi-layered, aren't you?
Thank you.
Okay. We have another applicant. Want to step forward?
Good afternoon, Mayor Pro Tem and council members. My name is Jennifer Christensen. I'm a resident of San Roque, and I have applied for the Transportation and Circulation Committee as well as the Water Commission, not for the purpose of being on both, but to offer up my services on either one as you may see fit. I am able to commit my time to either one of those commissions or committees. My reason for applying is really, I've been a resident of Santa Barbara for eight years now. The entire time, I'm a public servant, and I've been an employee of the County of Santa Barbara, both as an attorney with the County Council's Office, as well as an Assistant Director for Housing and Community Development, and now I am the Financial Reporting, Budget, and Cost Accounting Division Manager with the Auditor Controller's Office. I mention all of that just to give you a little bit of background and give you an idea of some of my expertise in municipal finance and local government, and that's pretty much where it ends. Mostly now want to be a part of the city as, just to give more of a contribution as a resident and become more involved in the city of Santa Barbara. So that's the reason why I've applied for water and transportation are purely out of personal interest. I don't have any specific issues that I'm looking to address or bring forth to either one of those commissions. As for the Water Commission, I don't have any specific expertise in specific water or wastewater facilities. On the other hand, I noticed that the questions asked about, I guess, qualifications in rates, budget, charges, and evaluating those things, and I would say, yes, I have a great deal of expertise in that area, obviously. As for the Transportation and Circulation Committee, that was my second choice, but a very close second choice. And again, it's just because I'm a very strong believer in, if I had one word, it would say accessibility. And I understand or gather from the city's mission statement or vision statement that it's about really providing a variety of, I guess, transportation options, really in order to engage not only the citizens, but obviously visitors and tourists, which are very much a part of our community. And I guess I'll leave it there and ask if you have any questions for me.
Okay. Mr. Williams?
My only question is, because you put down the Fire and Police Commission as your third choice, is there, I guess this could be a question for staff, too, is there an open seat in the Fire and Police Commission as well? Okay. And you still have that interest as well as, you know, it's there? Okay.
I do. I just understand that it was not, maybe the period for applications has not closed yet, or there hasn't been a determination to hold those interviews, so that's why I didn't speak to that at all.
Okay.
Yeah, the Fire, the special recruitment for Fire and Police Commission hasn't been scheduled yet, but we are going to do a special recruitment.
One seat or two seats?
It's one seat. There was a resignation.
Okay. Thanks.
Very good. Mr. Horton?
I was wondering if you're aware of the circulation element, and if you've read the, either the general plan for the city, or looked at the draft of the new one, and are you familiar with the work of the TCC? The reason I ask that is I was the, one of the members of the Charter Committee, and so I have a really high personal interest in getting people that, you know, that really are very familiar with the documents on that one.
No, Councilmember Horton, I'm not familiar. I am familiar with the general concept of the general plan and the elements, mostly out of my work with Housing and Community Development. While I haven't reviewed the circulation element, obviously, I'd be very committed to reading that, becoming versed in that, and as an attorney, one of my specialties is actually dealing with things on an issue-by-issue basis. I'm very good, as many attorneys are, at reviewing an issue and then studying up on all of the things that, well, basically the law that applies to that issue and coming to some determination.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Do we have another applicant?
My name is Paul Bullock. I'm here for the Creeks Committee. I'm part-owner and manager of the Eagle Inn down in West Beach, and I'm a board member of the Santa Barbara Lodging Association, and they're designated for this committee I'm interested in the Creeks, being a surfer, kayaker, avid scuba diver, fisherman, use the beach a lot, so the Creeks and the cleanliness of the water is an important issue for this town. And also for the tourism aspect as well, we need to have clean beaches and Creeks, and I'd be interested in helping guide the ways that the projects are picked, and how they're picked, and the things that happen. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions from council? Mr. House?
Mr. Bullock, and maybe this is more encouragement than it is a real question, but are you familiar with the program that we have, the Measure B funding for Creeks and that kind of thing? Have you studied up on that? Are you making yourself familiar with that material?
Yes, I've read the minutes and the agendas over the past year, 16 months, what's on the internet. Been to a meeting, and I've discussed it at great depth with Michael Jordan, who's also on the committee. So he's kind of told me what happens and what doesn't happen, and yeah, how fast the paint dries.
Good to hear. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. And thank you very much for voting to continue the CVB funding as well on a separate note. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bullock. Do we have another applicant?
Hi, Mayor Pro Tem, Council. Dick Flax is my name. I'm applying, reapplying, or applying for reappointment to the Living Wage Advisory Committee. I was one of the people who were the initial members, and I was one of those who advocated the formation of the commission in the lead-up to the passing of the legislation, so I thought it was my responsibility to agree to serve. And you will be getting a report, you should have gotten already, but you haven't, I don't think, a report on this, the results of Living Wage ordinance and many recommendations from the committee shortly, and so this process sort of comes in the middle, if you will, of the development of the committee's first report back to the council. I've been a resident of Santa Barbara for 40 years. This is actually the 40th anniversary of our coming here, and recently retired from UCSB as a sociology professor. What else do we need to know?
Mr. House?
Mr. Flax, actually, you're, as a professor, are you a Dr. Flax?
Doctor is good, but...
Yes, sir. I want to be sure.
I believe medical doctors really deserve that.
Give you the appropriate respect. Dr. Flax, we're going to be getting the report, and I'm looking forward to it, but would you just take a moment and just share with us some of the issues that have come before the committee and the kinds of things you're discussing?
Well, one set of issues, interestingly, comes from the business member of the group who raised some points about kind of contradiction in city policy that I found kind of intriguing, which is that the city finds that certain kinds of functions can be better, more cheaply performed in-house, because the living wage has led to, if you will, higher bid than before on, let's say, cleaning services, then the work goes back to the in-house people. And we thought, this is, he raised this as a contradiction in the policy, which I agree is interesting. What is the priority for the city? Is it because the wages paid, apparently in certain categories are below the living wage, that the city pays? That's an example. I don't think it's a major issue in terms of numbers, but from the point of view of business people in the community who are trying to maintain contracts that they've had, this is not a trivial issue. Another issue, obviously, was present when we began the legislative struggle, which was whether to cover nonprofits or not. And the committee has some language about that, which I don't have in front of me, so I'd rather you see what we're proposing. There was sort of incentives built in to get nonprofits to do the living wage, which didn't, as far as we know, not work. So we're reexamining that. And of course, what has been the effect of having the ordinance on people's wages is something that there's an effort to estimate in the report. Took a while for staff to work out a way of auditing compliance with the ordinance and so forth, so, and I think, I'm assuming they're pretty overloaded, so getting this report to you has taken longer than I think we would have hoped originally.
Great. Thank you very much.
Ms. Falcone?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. Dr. Flax?
Mr. Dick.
Dick.
Okay.
It's been, what, three years of implementation? Is that about right? And I was Chair of the Ordinance Committee and worked very hard on drafting this. I'd like, and I know we're going to get the report, we've heard about that, but just for the public at this point in time, could you tell us, in your opinion, how you think it has worked? Because I have not heard a peep since it's been implemented, so I'm taking from that no news is good news, and that it's working quite well, when all the bugs got worked out, you know, at the beginning of a program. But do you get a lot of folks coming? Is there an awful lot of oversight that you do, or is it pretty quiet?
Well, I spoke about the audit situation. I think there are, and I'd rather you see the report than me try to impromptu, I should have thought about getting, draft the report with me up here, but then I thought...
Just in your opinion, how do you think it's going?
In my opinion, the ordinance always covered only a small number of people, so there's something symbolic rather than really material about its larger impact, but for the, you know, we're talking, I think, about some hundreds of people whose wages are better now than they would have been before. And I'd like you to see what the numbers are that the staff has come up with and so forth. Could the ordinance be expanded? Maybe so. This is the worst time in history to talk about the city paying more money to people, but on the other, the whole idea of the ordinance was that the city shouldn't be furthering a situation in which people were living in poverty because of the wages they were getting from the city, so that, or through the city's budget. So that, I think we have seen some progress about that particular point.
Okay. Thank you very much. Do we have any other applicants?
My name is Terry Bolton. I applied for the Police-Fire Commission. You know, I apologize, I just got out of work and I'm not dressed properly, and I rush here as fast and my boss gave me the wrong time, too. So I'm sorry for being late. I think I'd be a great access to this, because I was on the police reserve like 20 years ago, so I kind of know the working of the situation, so.
Can I ask, have you filed an application downstairs with the Clerk's Office?
I filed an application, but I don't know if they turned it in or not.
Police and Fire, we have an opening.
Sir, could you please repeat your name?
Terry Bolton.
And you applied for Fire-Police Commission?
Yeah, there should have been an application, I don't know.
Okay, we haven't scheduled...
We haven't scheduled a recruitment yet, so you're supposed to be notified as soon as we schedule it. We'll let you know what the interview dates are.
Okay, because I didn't...
So actually, you're not late, you're early.
Okay.
Early, that's right.
Sorry.
Thank you very much.
Brenda, I don't know the other thing, whether it's possible to, as an elector, to have him qualify for the Fire and Police Pension Commission. I don't know if that would be something for Mr. Bolton to look at as well, if it was something in this recruitment. We do have an open slot in that, and since he did interview, I guess we could qualify.
Equal time, I was patiently just listening, because I would like to apply for that, and was informed that the recruitment was open. I have my application not filled out, so I'm doing a trial run here.
Yes. Yeah, we will be scheduling interviews for this separately.
That's what I understood, so I just thought I'd stay and listen.
Sure. I'm talking about a different commission. It sounds the same, the Fire and Police Pension Commission.
Okay. Okay. Thank you all very much for coming today. And with, ah, okay. Mr. House?
Thank you. And Brenda, can you help us? We've got, just to make sure it's clear, there's a number of people whose names appear here, have turned in applications but haven't shown up for interviews. Do we have, let's see, we have interviews that will be on Wednesday at Franklin Center, tomorrow at Franklin Center, and I suppose any who haven't shown up could come there, but that's really for the neighborhood centers, right?
Correct. That's correct. It's for the, it's for the community centers. It's for the lower-income neighborhood categories, and that was set up specifically so that they didn't have to appear at city council meetings.
So this then closes it for anyone who would have applied but didn't come for an interview, then they may want to apply next time, but they wouldn't be considered this time.
Right. And if their applications are still current when we have the annual recruitment, they would be notified that their application is still current, or that they will need to submit a new application.
Great. Okay. Thank you very much.
Very good. And with that, city council meeting, June 19, 2009, is adjourned. Thank you.